All right, good afternoon. This is a special session of the Jefferson County Commission. It's Friday, January 15th, 2021, and it's roughly 1:01 PM. First and foremost, we're going to allow public comment for 20 minutes. You will have three minutes, and all you need to do is raise your hand, and the county administrator will call on you. Also to note, we have received numerous written comments. All county commissioners have seen those comments to date. They will be submitted in the record. We will not be reading those comments, but they will be part of the record, and myself have read all of them already. We will only be taking verbal comments for this meeting. So Stephanie, feel free to start public comment.
Sure. So again, if you want to make public comment, just use the raise your hand icon. You just click on that, and then I'll unmute you. You can also send me a chat if you can't figure it. If you can't use the raise your hand icon, then you can send me a chat, and I will unmute you. So we have one person who has their hands raised, and it is Susan Pipes. And I'm just going to go with the order they appear on the screen. So I'm going to go ahead and unmute you, Susan, and you need to also unmute yourself.
In three minutes, too, please.
Yes, three minutes.
Hi, I am Susan Pipes, and most of you know that I am a community organizer and an activist. And I would like to just say that I'm kind of disappointed that I understand that you would like to discuss regarding the procedure of what may have happened with Mrs. Gibson. But that's exactly what you should have put on your agenda, that you needed to discuss what the action, whether you thought that what she did was correct or incorrect, instead of just putting on there that it needed to be a discussion about removal. In the past, you can go on Facebook, and you can see, for instance, that Josh Compton posts a lot about what the commission does, what it was going on, what affects the community. It is a constant, actually, what's going on, which is really a wonderful thing to do. Not all commissioners do that. And I know Mr. Stolifer is brand new, but the first, right out of the gate, the very first post is a very negative and divisive post to the community. And he posted what the action was, was illegal that Mrs. Gibson did. How does he know that? None of you are judge and jury. You do not know that. You could have posted instead that it needed to be looked into. You should give her the same respect and say, you know what? I would like to talk to you and investigate the matter. Everybody that attended that, the 30, some teachers, bus drivers, or anyone, police, firemen, if they're being paid by taxpayers, which, you know, Mrs. Gibson is a little bit different, I know, but people that are entrusted to take care of the public should be held to higher standard. I know that I sent you all a long letter. But riots and insurrection is very different than peaceful, you know, demonstration and civil disorder. I'm one of those people that have been arrested during a civil disobedience. I have never been to anything that has caused the chaos that we recently seen, and that has been so disheartening, and what is what made our beautiful Capitol of DC look like what it does. And to think that somebody would have almost harmed our vice president, that is just unbelievable. And anyone that attended that should have had no problem to say, I'm OK with telling you that I was there as a peaceful bystander protester. So yes, I want to clear my record, because that's the way it should be. But you, as an elected official, should take care of all of us and not try to be devices among us. And, you know, if you want to stand up and just say, I'm going to take care of nothing but the left versus right or the right versus left, then, you know, you're not really doing the community any service. You're just going to keep, you're just going to keep going with whatever is going on. And that's not how we should do it. We really shouldn't. So I think it's up to you all to...
All right, the next person is Denise Nick. And Denise, you'll need to unmute yourself.
Hi. I'm here today not only as a citizen of Jefferson County and a parent of students who attended Jefferson County Public Schools, but also as the taxpaying employer of Dr. Bondi Shay Gibson and the Board of Education. I'm requesting Dr. Gibson's resignation of employment with the Jefferson County Public Schools effective immediately. If Dr. Gibson refuses to resign, I'm requesting the Board of Education to conduct their due diligence in performing a termination of employment and conducting an exit interview on behalf of the citizens of Jefferson County. However, if the Board of Education fails to perform their duties they've been elected to perform by the people, I'm asking the County Commission to consider terminating Dr. Gibson for broad overreach, abuse of power, careless endangerment of employees and students' rights under our U.S. Constitution, and for her incompetency. Dr. Gibson clearly makes rash judgments and hasty decisions, which affects our entire county and burdens the taxpayer. With that said, many people have come here today to this public forum to voice their opinions and concerns. Some here will defend and protest Dr. Gibson's words and actions concerning the current situation. Should their protests be heard, or should they be silenced and prohibited from protesting? If you've answered yes, their voices should be heard as required under the U.S. Constitution, then you should be joining me in asking for her resignation and termination as well. I have a few questions, however, for the public and our community to consider. Has the Board of Education, as of today, applied the same measure and treatment for Dr. Gibson that she herself applied to these two employees for violating their First Amendment rights? Has she been suspended pending an investigation? If not, why? What makes her different than these two employees, and why is there two different sets of rules and two different sets of standards? And who creates these divisive rules and applies them? This is merely class warfare, in my opinion. Dr. Gibson claims she received a complaint from a citizen, and it appears without credible sufficient evidence, knowledge, and investigation, has taken measures to threaten the livelihood of two outstanding employees. She's not only threatened these two employees with termination, but she's also created a hostile work environment for them. This is a dangerous precedence to set. Dr. Gibson has clearly lost the community's trust and faith in her ability to serve our community. This is not social justice for the sake of social justice. This is cancel culture. This is not justice for people exercising their rights under the law. This is not justice when losing a job and income for the law-abiding citizen is threatened. This is not justice when employees who don't agree with you politically are punished and crucified for abiding by the law, while those who do agree with you politically break the law and do not receive letters, threats of termination, or fear of losing their job and income. Dr. Gibson is a liability to the citizens and taxpayers of this community, and she must be held responsible and accountable for her words and her actions. Thank you for your time today.
The next person is Lynn Widmire.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, I can.
OK. I'm speaking today to oppose Commissioner Stolifer's request that the County Commission consider removing elected board members and the superintendent for following their standard personnel procedures relating to the Capitol insurrection. I support the right of everyone to participate legally in political demonstrations. I do not support the right of everyone to lay siege to our nation's Capitol. I applaud the school board for investigating reports that school personnel were involved in the assault on the Capitol. I would hope the County Commission would do the same if reports were made that county employees stormed the Capitol or illegally entered the building or put the lives of police at risk. What really concerns me is that Commissioner Stolifer put this on the commission agenda before the school board announced its findings. This signals to me that the commissioner is not interested in respecting due process or the personnel procedures of the Board of Education. Is this an omen of things to come? I hope not. The County Commission has serious issues before it, like addressing the pandemic, improving broadband, and helping local businesses survive. Mr. Stolifer's saber rattling agenda item should not distract the commission from dealing with these important issues. Thank you, and I would like to thank Commissioner Compton for adding public comment to this session. Thank you.
OK, our next person is Catherine Jostick.
Hello, can you hear me?
Can.
Hi there. Thank you, commissioners, for the opportunity to speak. I, like many of the other speakers here, oppose the overreach of the County Commission in Board of Education proceedings. I fully support Dr. Gibson's investigation of the activities of school district employees at the Capitol on January 6th. What happened at the Capitol that day was a horrendous attack on our democracy. And I should think we would all want to investigate those people responsible for that. I believe that she will perform this investigation in a fair manner, and I believe that it is broad overreach and abuse of power for the Jefferson County Commission to insert itself into school board affairs. I think this sets a dangerous precedent for the JCC. Please don't sanction Dr. Gibson or get involved in the Board of Education protocols. Thank you.
All right, that was my last person.
No one's out, no one there, Stephanie?
I don't have anyone else. I haven't received any messages. And I, oh, wait, I'm sorry, there's another person, Dan Casto. Mr. Casto? I have unmuted you. Did you want to make public comment?
I mean, maybe we can move on if he can't connect. If he comes up again, let me know, and I'll let him make it, but...
Well, he did, he got raised again, so it's raised again. So I just unmuted him. He put it down again, so... And I don't have any...
Let's move on if we can make a connection, so...
OK.
And again, we will receive any more public comment written that can be submitted to the record as well, if you'd like to submit a written comment to the public. But we're going to move to the agenda now. We have seven bullet points here, and a few of these may require a special executive session with commission attorneys. Seeing how that may case, I'm going to jump down to bullet point number five, which is creating an additional early voting location. So I know we all are familiar with the long lines this past election. This is strictly to make it easier for the public to cast their vote, regardless of political party or who that vote is for. I stood in lines, I know others stood in lines. I think we, as a commission, should take the initiative to at least start another second precinct for early voting. So I'm just, I'm going to start the discussion and just put that out there for other commissioners to comment and see where it goes. But members of the public have requested it, that I do this, and I just want to see what the commissioners feel about this.
Mr. Chairman, can you hear me?
Oh, yeah, I can hear you.
OK. I can say a couple weeks ago, I talked to Nikki about adding additional early votes. And there is a lot of detail that goes into this. There is a, an advertisement period of 120 days, and there is some collaboration with both the Democrat and Republican Executive Committee. And I asked her, when should we start? If we want to add, if we want to add this to our, when should we put this on agenda if we want to have an additional early voting location? And she said, now, because it takes a long time to go through the process. I can tell you, I did talk to some members of the Democrat Executive Committee. I texted with Lee Coons, the chairman, and Ms. Cheryl Lawrence. And I obviously have spoken to folks on the Republican Executive Committee. And for the first time ever, I can say both of these committees, Republican, Democrats, actually agree on something. So this will be the first for forever, for a long time, I guess. So whatever we need to do to start the process, I think, I think we just maybe need a formal motion to start the process, to move this forward. It does take time. I think this is something that our clerk's office is going to have to weigh in on. And, you know, one of the biggest issues that I talked to Nikki about was trying to figure out a way. So we didn't have people running to, going to each location and voting twice, because right now they have a book in the courthouse and only one book. So we have to figure out an electronic, electronic way to do that. I'm sure there's a way in other places to do it, and we just have to figure out how to do that here.
Our poll books are electronic. So I think it should, it should register, should register when the person votes in the electronic poll book now.
That's good. And again, this, I knew was a long process, so I wanted to get it on here early. I know we don't have the county clerk or Nikki with us to discuss it further. This is just the initial discussion to hear from the commissioners if we're all in agreement to get the ball rolling. I think we could bring the county clerk into a follow-up discussion and see exactly timelines and when we need to get things done specifically. It's great that the Democratic Committee and the Republican Committees agree on this, because I think it will benefit all citizens of the county and maybe helpfully, helpfully make sure that they don't have to wait in those hour-long lines. We got, I had some data looked up, as far as the county clerk gave us for early voting. Some of the early voting percentages are in the 30%. So that's a large portion of the electorate voting early votes. So any other commissioners with any comments on this? Commissioner Jackson, Caleb, Tab?
I'm fine with, I'm fine with researching it. I think the biggest issue will be deciding where, not only for the facility that can accommodate the public, but, you know, if we could have a study of, you know, where the most people vote. I mean, I think, you know, far enough away from downtown Charlestown to make it a little more convenient for other folks. But that's, that's just my point on it. I am glad to support an effort for another location. But I, as you said, there's lots of moving parts to the whole process.
No, I was just going to go ahead and make a motion.
Do we need a motion, Stephanie?
Um, I think you should make a motion to, you know, because the way the process works is I think the clerk looks at, you know, all of the, the data recommends a place, gets a notarized letter from both of the executive committees saying that they agree to the location, and then it moves forward to the County Commission. So I think that you should make a motion if you want to get the ball rolling. The other thing is it will require additional funds in the budget, because we'll have to, of course, have additional poll workers there. We'll probably have to have at least a bailiff there, and, you know, whatever building rent there is and any expensive expenses associated with that. But I think if you want to move forward today, you go ahead and make the motion, and then that would give the clerk or the County Commission the direction that she needs to get the ball rolling on it. She, she has logged on, but she's out of the office, so I think she, she's not actually, you know, she, she's just kind of watching us. So, but I wanted to let you know that she is here. But I don't think that she's, I don't think she wants to speak on this right now.
That's fine. So Commissioner Jackson, you want to propose a motion, feel free to do so.
Yeah, so I'm going to go ahead and make the motion that the County Commission move forward in working with the county clerk for office and Nikki Painter as elections deputy and exploring alternative locations for early voting to include discussions with the Democrat Committee and Republican Committee.
I'll second that motion. Is there any further discussion on this? I'm not sure what that noise is, but...
That's my dog, I'm going to mute for a second.
I was trying to, I was trying to mute whoever it was, I didn't...
He wants to talk, too, and he's not in here to do it. He's just crying, so I'm really sorry.
Thank goodness it's not my dog.
So hearing no further comment, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion passes unanimously.
Commissioner Compton, if I could interrupt you.
Go ahead.
Would you have people who wanted to speak? I think Mr. Casto was having some issues with his microphone, but he's gotten that worked out. And then there is another individual, Erin Kraus, who had been trying to raise their hand, but for whatever reason, it wasn't going forward. And I think they have their issues worked out. So I didn't know if you wanted to go back to the public comment.
That's fine. Let's do these two individuals, because we had some pickups with the technology. If there are any further public comments, they will be done at the end of the meeting.
OK, all right, got it. All right.
Hey, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great, thank you very much, Commissioner Compton, for allowing me to speak. So as you, I think, all know, I represented Ms. Renner and Ms. McDonald in connection with the Board of Education's disciplinary action against them. I'm happy to report both were absolutely exonerated of any wrongdoing. It's very offensive that certain folks commented today suggesting that they had done anything incorrectly. They were suspended merely for having a Facebook photo on a charter bus of wearing MAGA hats. Ms. McDonald specifically was only tagged in that photo. So the superintendent of schools, let's just be clear, suspended both of these ladies for simply wearing a MAGA hat, which is just absolutely frightening. Some of the folks who commented today, I know, were involved with Jefferson County Vision, Ms. Pipes, Ms. Jostwick. Just to be clear, they were part of a group that conspired with the superintendent of schools to violate the constitutional rights of Rockwell by effectively trying to steal their property through eminent domain, which Judge Groh thankfully prevented. And finally, this Board of Education has once again violated the law by foregoing any sort of oversight over the superintendent. And then just last night, decided to once again violate the law by ignoring the State Board of Education's requirement that the kids return to school, which is very sad, given that that really hurts the working poor who don't have the money to pay for childcare. And a lot of them aren't the best situated to provide the kids with the education that they deserve. So I, one lady earlier said, class warfare, I totally agree. It's just continuing an economic downward spiral, and hopefully this commission will put a stop to it. But once again, thank you very much for taking up this issue.
All right, and our next person is Erin Kraus, or perhaps Jennifer Kraus. I'm going to unmute you. And the reason I think it might be Jennifer is because they, they sent me a chat. All right, you're self-muted, so you have to unmute yourself.
Thank you, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Hi there, my name is Jennifer Kraus. I have two children in our county schools, one high schooler and an elementary schooler. I also have a preschooler, but he goes to a private school, so that's not, you know, what we're, what we're going to discuss. But my issue is what was just brought up a moment ago regarding the decision by the county to continue to keep schools closed for, well, until at least March 1st. Who knows, when that comes closer, there will probably be some other reason to keep schools closed. My children are not getting the education that we are paying for with our, with our tax dollars. And there is no real reason to keep the schools closed if everybody feels comfortable, and there were no real issues in the schools regarding COVID with educators and administrators wearing their PPE. I'm not clear why they felt the need to continue to keep things shut. My daughter, last evening, when she came in from playing with her friends, we had to tell her that schools were going to remain closed, and she burst into tears. She was so excited to get to go back to a normal school environment, as normal as it can be right now, and get to see her teachers and her friends, and she was crying. She had the rug pulled out from under her for no, no real good reason. This is, this is strictly political. And if the teachers are very concerned regarding their vaccinations not being fully effective, then continue with your one dose of your vaccine and wear your PPE, and you'll continue to remain safe as you were before, even safer with the one dose going so far. Get your second dose, you know, everything should be fine. I have no idea why they felt this was appropriate. I'm just, I'm heartbroken for her, and I can't help my high schooler, who actually really needs to be in, in school. All these high schoolers are learning to do is Google answers. They're not learning. They're, they're just not learning. This is, this is a travesty. It's a travesty. I'm wondering when I'm going to get my tax credit for doing the teacher's jobs. You know, when I go to the Target anymore, I have to ring myself up. Do I get a discount for that? You know, when we've got children in these public schools, they're supposed to be getting an education from the teachers. I'm not a teacher. My husband, he's a lawyer, he's not a teacher. He has to help her, I have to help her, you know? And goodness knows, we're not, definitely not able to teach a high schooler. I can't, I can't do that. I'm not a teacher.
All right.
All right, thanks, Stephanie. And just to note, you may be curious as to why there's 20 minutes initially. So we have a legal counsel standing by, that's outside counsel that is being paid. So we need him to get through his agenda items and save the taxpayers some money. Any further comments will be accepted at the end of the meeting, and we will wait as long as we need to to hear any more comments. We're going to jump to bullet point number six, which is discuss County Commission meeting dates and times and how they are held. So we briefly touched on this last meeting. And just before we discuss this, let me make it quite clear. Any staff or commissioner has the ability to virtual into any meeting, regardless. Safety is our utmost priority for staff and fellow commissioners. Irrelevant of what is decided on this agenda item, you still have that ability to call in and conduct business virtually and with no repercussions whatsoever if you're a county employee. So just first things first, we're at a virtual meeting right now. The first County Commission meeting of 2021 was in-person. So I think, from my standpoint, I'd like to see a balance. And again, you can conduct every single meeting virtually if you, that's your desire. I'm going to propose we have a hybrid approach going forward until the COVID situation is sorted out. All evening meetings or special meetings, if they occur, are virtual, and all morning meetings, which would be essentially once a month, are in-person, or the option to be in-person. I don't know what the other commissioners feel about that proposal. I'd like some feedback.
Mr. Chairman, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Good deal. Yes, I think that's, I think that's a great option moving forward. I did want to discuss a little bit about the fifth Thursday meeting. I feel that we could probably accomplish what we need to in the first and third Thursday. The fifth Thursday only falls on the calendar about four times a year, and I think we should probably just take that off our, our schedule. But I would just like to add to your suggestion, and that I do like that, and removing the fifth Thursday meeting.
Any other comments from commissioners on this or this agenda item specifically, dates, times, meeting ways? Commissioner Hudson? Are you still with us?
Yeah, I'm still here. It's, I'd just, I would be echoing what Steve said. That's why I didn't say nothing.
Commissioner Tab, Jackson?
This is Jane. As you know, I do not feel we should be meeting in person at this time. And if you are going to meet in person, there's a state policy, you should be wearing your mask. So I request that of all my fellow commissioners. I will participate virtually. I think removing the fifth Thursday can be problematic. And I know you all don't want to hear this, but when I started on the commission years ago, we met every week. You know, that's a pretty big gap in time if we don't have that fifth Thursday sometimes. Or we'll just have a lot more special sessions, which I don't think are the best way to conduct regular business. So I'm not in favor of the proposal. I don't know if there's a formal motion yet or not.
I don't think there's been a motion yet. Commissioner Tab?
Mr. Chairman, I will go ahead and move a motion just so we can get through this and vote on it. I move that we meet live with an option, obviously, to be virtual on the first, on all day meetings, all evening meetings, every single one will be virtual, and also to eliminate the fifth Thursday. That's my motion, Mr. Chairman.
There a second?
Second.
Alright, any further discussion? So just, I have some quick discussion on my part. So I've been on the commission now four years. I know Commissioner Hudson has also. Commissioner Tab's been there a bit longer, and we have two new commissioners. The third Thursday meeting is generally a more busy meeting, and then the following week's first Thursday meeting is very light, or vice versa. I know it causes staff significant stress with back-to-back meetings like that, knowing one is overstacked and the other one is very slim. So I don't think we're doing the public a disservice of getting rid of that third Thursday meeting under the assumption that if there are mitigating things that are occurring, we call a special session. But for normal business, I've not seen the issue with that over the last four years. I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, Commissioner Hudson or Tab, but generally, one or the other meetings that fall on a third Thursday, the, the next meeting is very light, and we're there for a short period of time.
Aren't you talking about the fifth Thursday? You're saying third Thursday?
I think you mean the fifth.
I'm thinking third meet, I'm thinking third meeting, but I mean fifth Thursday. So.
Okay.
That's my standpoint. I mean, is there further discussion on this? Okay, so that being said, all those in favor of the motion to conduct day meetings in person and evening meetings virtually with the option of being virtual for all meetings, commissioner or county employees, and removing the third Thursday meeting, which occurs four times in a year from now on going forward? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye. I'm opposed. Nay.
Alright, so motion passes four to one. Alright, we'll move to the, the last bullet point, which is bullet point number seven. Stephanie, refunding of 2012 hospice bond.
So I sent all of the commissioners a memo from Kim Seacrest, who is bond counsel for hospice. Just some background, in 2012, the commission, we have the ability to assist certain organizations, 501(c)(3)'s, nonprofits, and also we have done one for the Board of Education as well to run a bond to help them with the financing of their new facility, which is on the county line. We did that in conjunction with the Berkeley County Council. It doesn't cost the taxpayers anything. We are not responsible for any of the amounts of that bond. They have a, they have a payment coming up, like a larger payment coming up, and also they want to refinance the bond to take advantage of lower interest rates. And I don't see, Mr. Seacrest had a conflict with today's meeting. He didn't know if he would be able to pop on. I don't see him on here. But basically, this is to determine if the commission is interested in scheduling a public hearing to start that process, to refund the bond, and then I think they would, they would basically refinance the bond. They would do that. They want to do it at the same time with Berkeley County. It's possible that it could happen on February 4th, which is our first meeting, but they, he said more realistically, it would happen the, the second meeting in February, on the third Thursday, by the time that they, you know, had gotten all the paperwork. That, that public hearing has to be advertised, and I'll work with Kim Seacrest to get that advertised if it's something that the commission is interested in doing. Again, there's no liability for the commission on this. It doesn't, you know, it's not on the taxpayers' tax bill. Hospice is completely responsible for making the payments on the bond. And in, in the event that the bond is not repaid, it is also their liability.
So the biggest driver here is financial. They're, they're just trying to recognize the abnormally low interest rates currently, which will save them a significant, significant amount of money. So I mean, obviously, I have no problem with this, and it's not affecting the county taxpayers. Like you said, hospice is 100% responsible for the bond. So I, I'll just make the motion. I move we hold a public hearing on February 18th at 7:00 PM.
Why don't you just go ahead and, because he, if he can do February, the first meeting in February, he wants to. So why don't we just say that you want to move forward with the public hearing for the hospice bond, and then we'll kind of coordinate, I'll coordinate, because it'll be during our regular meeting. We're not.
Okay. I move we move forward with a public hearing for the hospice bond.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, motion passes unanimously. Alright, so the, the next few items, the next four that are remaining, I'm gonna save the fourth one, which is the discussion about the county school district, et cetera. Some of these will require executive session. Is Nathan available? So we can give the public what we can for some of these, and anything that needs to be done in executive session, we can do that.
Hi.
How you doing, Nathan? So.
Alright. Yeah, so with regard to the first matter on the agenda related to that EEOC case, we have an outside counsel who had represented the commission on that case, and I think that he has some follow-up reporting to, to give you on that case. So that may involve, it involves legal advice and may be liability issues. I would recommend we do that in executive session. There is a memorandum by the same counsel regarding the development authority that again could potentially involve some litigation or, or liability issues. And so I would recommend that that be discussed in executive session. The discussion about the Greenway Engineering contract is, again, potentially, there's some legal liability or, or potential litigation issues that could occur from that. And so I would recommend doing that in executive session. And perhaps when we come out of executive session, you know, maybe some things could be shared about any of these things. And regarding the school district, I would have to state that the statute, which is West Virginia Code 741, appoints the prosecutor's office to represent the county commission and the school board. So because of that, our offices conflicted out from dealing with a potential direct conflict between the county commission and the school board. And so we are removing ourselves from that particular discussion. However, we have requested, or at least the county administrator has requested that Mr. Kennedy, who is counsel for the other issues, since he is already involved in this meeting, that he would advise the commission regarding those things. If we go into executive session, I would be a part of the first three things that we were discussing. But when it comes to the school board issue, I would withdraw. And I think that Prosecutor Harvey is also on here, and he would withdraw as well regarding the school board.
Okay, that's duly noted. Thank you. So bullets one, two, and three, it doesn't seem like there's much we can tell the public outside what's being discussed by legal counsel. Bullet point number four, I understand that we're gonna have legal counsel discuss this with us, possibly also in executive session, if that's what we choose to do. I would like to open the floor up to any commissioners that want to make comments concerning this agenda item. And this item was put on here and requested by Commissioner Stolifer. So I'm gonna kick it over to him. He requested this, and Mr. Stol, Commissioner Stolifer, before yours.
Very well. Before you do, Mr. Stolifer, I'm going to have to sign off of this meeting, and I believe Prosecutor Harvey would as well. And I would just request that someone notify us when, or if you go into executive session.
Thank you, Nathan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, I did, I did place this on the agenda for us to discuss. I just want to be very clear. This has nothing to do with partisanship. It has to do with human decency and rather someone's civil rights were violated. This is also about holding somebody accountable. I did request this to be on our agenda to discuss code, state code 667. And merely, we wanted to, I want to discuss this with legal. And, you know, I have some questions about how we would move forward, if we would move forward. This, our legal might say this is nothing, or, I don't know. That's why I want to talk to our legal counsel to get some more information. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other commissioners have comments on this? Okay, I just have one quick comment. I, I generally don't like seeing the county commission get involved with the Board of Education. We're both elected bodies, but the Board of Education needs to have a serious coming-to-Jesus moment and get their house in order. What's going around in the public and social media, trying to figure out what's true and what's not true is really hard, and we all know that for every issue. I'll be frank, I have a one-and-a-half-year-old, and what I'm seeing go on with the superintendent in the Board of Education, I'm having a real hard time considering sending him to that school or the schools in the county if this continues. I know I share that with other county residents. If you look at the enrollment numbers, they have been dropping significantly over the past few years. So I don't know what's going on with the population increasing and the school enrollment decreasing. So something fundamentally is going on there that needs to be corrected. I think they need to clean up their own house. That being said, that's my only comment. So are there any further comments? That being said, I move we go into executive session to seek legal advice regarding the first four bulleted items on the agenda.
Second.
And just, can you clarify for the record who will be our legal counsel for those items? Because I think it's different for the last one.
No problem, Commissioner Tab. Thank you. So for the first three bullets on the agenda, our legal counsel will be Nathan Cochran, the county attorney. For the fourth bulleted item, Mr. Cochran and the county prosecutor will not be part of that. And Greg Kennedy will be specifically part of that, but he may also be part of the discussion on the first three as well. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So we're in executive session. And we're gonna jump to the executive session webinar, and we'll be back after that if there's any motions to be made out of the executive session. So I'll hop off here.
Yeah? You got one?
I gotta walk you out of this one.
Okay. You.
Deputy, do I need to sign off, or?
Can you hear me, Tricia?
Wow, can you hear me now?
Yeah, I just got a message, no one can hear you. I'm like, I'm not even talking, so. Dear God. Caleb, are you here?
I am, how are you?
That didn't sound like Caleb.
Yeah, Caleb.
Oh, I thought you said. I thought you said came, I apologize.
Right, no problem. It's good to see that you're here also, sir.
Well, thank you for letting me join my video.
Commissioners, this is Jessica. I'm not sure if you can hear me. Stephanie wanted me to let you know that her mic is not working at the moment.
Okay, I think we're good, Jessica. I think we can probably get this to the end.
Okay.
Thanks. Sorry, I guess we're back on then, just nod Stephanie. Okay, I'm gonna assume we're back in session. So I'm gonna move we come out of executive session.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we're in regular session. So there's one item out of executive session, and I think Mr. Stolifer will take care of that motion.
Yes. I move a motion to allow the staff to negotiate a separation agreement with Greenway Engineering.
The planning, would you accept the amendment, the planning commission, staff and legal counsel?
Yes, sir.
All right, I'll second it. Is there any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, all right, passes unanimously. I need to restate a previous motion I made because I made it incorrectly. Thank you, Mr. Tim Ross, for emailing me and telling me that. So I want to restate my motion about the meetings, and I want to move we remove the third Thursday meeting if it occurs in a month. And take off my previous motion suggesting the fifth Thursday, I believe it was. Is there a second?
Second.
Wait a minute, I think you've got that backwards again.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's the fifth Thursday's meeting to be eliminated.
I don't know why I'm having so much trouble with this.
I got it.
Jay, do you try that, please? Does anybody else want to try the motion? God forbid I make the wrong motion again.
All right, the motion was to have the first Thursday of the month, a live meeting, the third Thursday of the month to have virtual, and the fifth Thursday, which only occurs four times a year, to be eliminated.
That's correct. I'll second that. Thank you, Commissioner Stolifer. I don't know why I struggled with this today. Is there any further, is there any further discussion on this? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Is there any more business that come before us today?
No, sir.
I move we adjourn.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we're adjourned. Thank you, guys.
Aye.
Yep, goodbye. See you later.